Welcome everyone to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. Looks like we have a full board and certainly plenty of folks attending tonight, which is great. We're going to get right to it. The orders are here in the Select Board Chambers, so when my colleagues have a moment, pop over and take a look. There's two different pages to sign. We have two sets of Select Board Minutes to approve, November 10th and November 16th. Would someone like to make a motion on those?
This is Mary. I'll move that we approve the, I'll start with November 10th, 2020 minutes of meeting.
Motion by Mary to approve the 10th. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Sharon. For discussion, any corrections, deletions, or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I have the hard copy here on my desk. I'll leave. The next set is from November 16th of 2020. Are there any, any motion to be made to approve these folks?
This is Mary. I move we approve the minutes of our budget meeting on November 16th. I have one amendment to propose.
Motion by Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sharon. Mary, what page?
Page two. Number four, Review of the Police Budget.
Okay.
The actual percent increase is not 4.77, it's 2.88. And that is because the amount of grant that we're receiving, particularly from the school, for the school resource officer has increased. And I'd also, Bill, if you could also make that change on the budget pages, I'd appreciate that.
So that percentage increase is calculated automatically based upon the figures we put in, so something must have changed. Because I don't put in the actual increase, it's calculated.
But what changed was the actual, and this is what, I mean, I did check in with Sue on this, because we get more money from the grant than we did last year. Even though we're spending more, the increase, the percent increase is smaller. So we can double check this if you want tomorrow.
Yeah, I think we talked about that, and it was, it decreases the amount to be raised by taxes, but the percent increase year over year is the increase. But, so the percentage to be raised by taxes goes down, but then the overall budget increase from last year, from this year to next year stays the same.
All right, well, your understanding is different than what I had with Sue, but we checked.
I will talk with Sue about it. We will, we will figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so Mary, would you like to keep on, would you like to keep the 4.77 until there's clarity, and we could hold off on approving these minutes for now? Or would you like to use your number of 2.7, or 2.88?
Let's do this. Let's add a phrase to that first. The proposed budget is a 4.77% increase to last year, however, because grant revenues are increased, the effective increase is only 2.88%.
But it isn't 2.88. The overall budget is increasing 4.77. The amount to be raised isn't 4.77, but that's not what you're saying.
As I said, JP, I did talk with Sue about this, because I was trying to get it straight too, because when we looked at our budget worksheet, we were comparing it with, including the grants and revenues from last year. So, you know, if you want to, if we want to hold off on the minutes, that's fine. But I also want to be clear that the police budget isn't up as much without an offset.
Why don't we do a little more investigating, and we can hold those for two weeks?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. At this time, the Select Board would entertain any public comment. Anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to speak, this is your opportunity to address the board in town. Is there anyone who's looking to speak? Hey, Mr. Hotchberg, how are you?
I'm doing well, Mr. Terrenceini. How are you?
I'm fine, sir. What brings you here tonight?
So, um, thank you for, for letting me speak, and happy holidays to everybody here. So my name is Jeff Hotchberg.
Just for record, Jeff, so it's Jeff Hotchberg. Not everyone's on camera and can see your smiling face, so I want everyone to understand. Just tell us your name, where you live, and the purpose for joining, if you would.
Sure. So my name is Jeff Hotchberg. My wife, Jill Talbot, and I just purchased a property in Rutland Town, and we'll be looking to move there very soon, in the immediate future. And the property is at 272 David Road, which has a very interesting history of title issue and what have you. And there's question about the access to it. And that's why I wanted to, to speak tonight.
Okay, and, and access in terms, in terms of what?
So, so the house, the house site, which was originally given to Kevin and Stephanie Alnicki back in 91, sits in an undeveloped area of Grandview Estates, off of its, the back corner lot where your original plan design was to connect North End Drive all the way to Ruth Ave. And that never happened way back in the day. That house was then sold to a couple by Robert and Patricia Lynch. The house went up for foreclosure, and the bank that has, was, it was handed to finally, solved a right of access because the paper road that accesses that lot on the plan design cut across one of the parcels, and that created a title issue. Subsequently, we purchased the property from the bank, now in possession of the 2.7 acres in the home site. But the road, the .9 acre road that's on the plan design is, I don't know who owns it. I don't know, and that's what I'm trying to get clarification for, because I don't believe that it was properly deeded to the Lynch's. And the Lynch's still own the three properties in between the house site and the access point at the corner of David Road and North End Drive. So.
Have you had a conversation with our town listeners, Howard Burgess or Marcia Choffey?
I spoke to Byron, Mr. Hathaway, earlier today. We discussed at length. He did some quick research and saw some confusion too, in terms of the history of the, where the deed for that parcel, that road and access actually existed. We don't know.
Why don't we, why don't we, as a board, hear from Byron for a moment, and tell us what you've found, sir? You're on mute there, Byron.
If I'm on mute, you can't hear me.
There you are.
That sounds better, I guess. To go back, around 1990, what I found from our longtime town employee Walt Tripp, was that at that time, he, it was soon after he was hired, he was, he and George Geerden were sent up to the end of Ruth Avenue for something. He doesn't remember what. But at that point, the driveway to that house went directly off the end of Ruth Avenue and turned and went to the house site. That was during the time that Kevin was, Alnicki was building the house. Somehow, some way, the driveway got changed, and it now comes out at the corner of North End Drive and the corner of David Road. And I don't know why that was changed. Walt said, all he said was, they made them change it. But he couldn't tell me who "they" was. So that leaves that company in. Some of the old maps, I think some of the old Planning Commission maps perhaps, will show that Ruth Avenue was intended to extend a little farther north, and it does, and then make a hard left turn and come out at that corner of David Road and North End Drive. I haven't actually, I haven't actually seen any names, close to road names or anything of the sort. The Highway Book, Mary, you'll like to, and David Road and Ruth Avenue, both are in there. And the research shows that Ruth Avenue that was deeded to the town stops currently where it does now, at approximately Jamie McNeil property. And David Road, that was deeded to the town, the part that was deeded ends at the corner of North End Drive, David Road intersection there. I can't seem to find anything where, mention of another 50-foot right-of-way that extends anywhere else. If you look at the town's property maps, there's dotted lines that show that possibility that it, that it might exist, but those dotted lines fall within properties that are still owned by the Lynch's. The only other question I have, and maybe it would be appropriate to, I think Victor Segali did some of the research and represented the Lynch's, and maybe he could spread some light on this if, if he were contacted. It would, it would seem logical that perhaps lot number 97 has that right-of-way out to North End Drive included with it, but I have nothing for data or information to show that that actually is the case. So, Mr. Hotchberg would like to have something for clear access, and I think his point is that perhaps that 50-foot right-of-way belongs to the town, and therefore, we should be issuing him an access permit to that. I don't know if we own it or not. I don't think so, but somebody a little smarter than I am probably would have to determine that.
Sounds a little sticky here.
It's very sticky, because I've talked to three, three different attorneys and probably two different banks over the last four years, trying to sort this whole thing out. And apparently, Mr. Hotchberg somehow got a clearer title to the property and has purchased the property, but maybe the access to that property is still kind of muddy.
Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, I, we can't solve this tonight. So, and we've been in similar situations. What we don't want to do is have the town spend a lot of money on attorney fees trying to sort this out. So I guess I would start by suggesting this go to the Highway Committee, but before then have Mr. Hotchberg send whatever title work he has from whatever attorney to Byron, and then we can all take a look at it. Mr. Hotchberg, I do title searches, so it's possible I may kind of get what's going on. Or not. Byron's really good at this, and if he can't figure it out, it might be more of a problem. So that would be, I would move to send it to Highway with the request that Mr. Hotchberg send whatever title information he has to Byron.
Motion made, motion made by Mary. There's a second by Sharon. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Any opposed to the motion? Motion passes. Jeff, anything else before we let you go?
Yeah, if I may real quickly. First, thank you. I appreciate the, the board helping me out uncover this mystery and solve it. And I just want what's, I want to be able to fix it in the right way and make sure everything's square. I, I do know for a fact that Mr. Segali, the attorney for the Lynch's, filed a, there was a part of the right of access issue. There was an engagement filed with the deed for part of it, that road. But with that, I believe he showed me a survey map that was done very recently. And so I'll, I'll try to track that down, and I'll get that to you, Mr. Hathaway, and see if we can't move forward and solve this, this mystery.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Jeff, welcome to Rutland Town.
Hey, thanks. Good to be back.
All right. Thanks. Good to see you. Take care.
You too. Thank you all.
Okay, is there anyone further in our public comment segment of the meeting that would like to speak at this time? Anyone who's not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna move right on to Town Departments. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, got a few things in the packets for you guys. Number one is the updated meeting schedule and committee items, noting for everyone that Town Hall is closed Thursday and Friday this week. And I will add the North End Drive topic to the Highway Committee. So that is Mary and Joe. So if you want to let me know when you'd like to get together, we can, we can get that scheduled. Second is from Repro Graphics for the Town Report. Last year, last, last go-around, we signed a two-year agreement, which got, got us through the last publishing. So it is up again, and they have presented us with the contract. They are, the sales rep, Mary, has said they are, they are reducing the number of towns they're accepting this year. So the sooner, if, if we want to go with them, the sooner we have a contract with them, the more we guarantee a spot to go. So right now, there's, there are, they are available, and there is one for us.
So this is Mary. I would move that we approve the two-year contract for 1,500 copies at 4563 each year.
authorize me to sign that, Mary?
Authorizing Josh to sign on behalf of the board, if we approve it.
Motion, motion by Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Almost.
I heard both Sharon and Joe for the seconds. So we'll go with Sharon on that one. Joe, we'll get you on the next second, all right?
So it looks like we have, you know, we've budgeted for what, we've budgeted for enough money for this. We did want them to mail it, so we have to provide a check for the postage. And I guess this is a question for Carrie. Is postage included in our Town Report budget line, or does it come out of the postage line? Or doesn't it really matter?
Mary, I will have to look into that, because I know that there's a postage, separate postage line, but I'm not sure if the Town Report comes out of that line.
Okay. I think we're okay, but my motion stands anyway.
What, what we did for this most recent one, the postage for mailing it is included in the postage line, because we pay for postage. Whether they mail it, or whether they mail it, or we mail it, we pay postage. That was included in the budget, the municipal postage line, though the, the Town Report budget line is, is, is for the cost of them producing it and their labor to mail it, and then we send a separate check for postage. So we already have that expense accounted for.
Good. Thanks, Bill.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Bill.
Uh, we have a motion. There was a second. Any further discussion on the annual Town Report? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thanks for that. Bill, number three, we'll, we'll hold off on that until the, a little later in the program.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. So three and four kind of go together just with, just for reference. Number five was a letter we received, been sent out to everybody, and you got a follow-up from Deputy Chief Washburn. Number six is from the Vermont Transportation Board. They received a petition to name the Vermont State Airport Building. So they are letting us know of that petition and asked us to publish it at the, or post it here at the office. So it is posted. But there'll be a hearing about naming it, the Walter E. Houghton Memorial Terminal. So if anybody's interested, there is a hearing on that. Number seven, for your review and approval, is the next step in changing the speed limit on the dead-end section of McKinley Avenue to 25 miles an hour. So Kevin Brown put that, the updated ordinance together for us, for you all to review and approve.
All right, so what's the board's pleasure on this one?
This is Mary. I move we approve the change in the speed limit ordinance for McKinley Avenue extension, or whatever it's called now.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Joe DiNardo, for discussion. It looks like there's five places, one for each of us to sign. I have the hard copy here, Town Hall, if adopted tonight. Anything to discuss on this from the board or Byron?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. I've signed it. I'll leave it here for the rest of you.
Thank you. Number eight is for, is for New Business E. It's correspondence from Kevin Brown. He is joining us at approximately 7:00 PM to discuss that item. And the last thing I have is, under, also under New Business, it's the quote, "to replace the trash container" from Larry Delvinieri. So, he is, he is on the call, but that's his quote, "to replace the trash container at the transfer station."
Okay, so Larry, good evening. Can you hear me?
I'm muted.
Yes, Josh.
All right. We have a quote here, Dell, as you're aware, for Hubbard Brothers. It is for a 4D cubic yard receiver container for the transfer station, for the amount of $7,400. I believe we talked about this at the last meeting. It was something that we desperately needed. And what is the board's pleasure on this item?
I would move, Josh, that we purchase the new container and use the money from the capital improvement fund at this time for that.
Second.
Motion by Joe, seconded by John Paul. Further discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mary. You first.
Yeah, is this a new container? It doesn't say that anywhere.
Yes, Mary. That's a new container. That is going to include the painting, the shipping, and the taxes. It went up $100 because they use the Vermont state tax, where I have to pay New York state tax on it.
So could we add that to the quote, so it's clear? Price to include, what did you say, painting?
The painting of the, the box, yes. The shipping of the box, and the taxes.
New York state taxes.
New York state taxes. That's correct.
Okay, a new container.
I've included in here, new, painted, shipped, and New York state taxes.
Perfect. Mary, what, what happens to the old one?
The old one, I'm going to scrap it. I don't know if Hubbard's is going to take it or Max Steel, but I'm going to check both and see what I can get for the best price there.
Okay.
You know, I'd hate, I don't want to be Scrooge. It's this time of year, but the second container, I've looked at it. It looks good right now, but it's still 27 years old, so that could give tomorrow, or next year, or the year after. Who knows? So I just want you folks to be aware of this.
Yeah, we know the stuff is wearing out. That's why we proposed the depreciation fund for the transfer station.
Are you going to talk about that tonight, or no?
I don't know.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Any, um, let's see. So we got new, painted, shipped, New York state taxes, 40 cubic yard receiver container, $7,400. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Josh, the, if we get a few bucks for that old container for scrap, what would we do with those dollars? Would they just go back into the general fund, or would they go back into the capital improvement fund where this fund came out of?
I think it would be our discretion at this time where that money went. It, it could make sense to put it back in the capital improvement fund, since we're spending down that for the new bucks.
Yeah. Okay, we'll have to make that decision when that arrives, whatever Larry gets for it.
Probably should ask Andrew if we can do that. I, I thought it went into the general, all receipts go into the general fund, but maybe not.
Yeah, and if we didn't spend, if we didn't spend it, JP, it would end up in the capital improvement fund anyway. Because that's where the excess goes at the end of the fiscal year.
Good points. Bill, could you mention that to Andrew?
Yes.
Or Carrie, Bill or Carrie?
Yep.
Um, okay. Thanks, Larry, for your work on that.
Thank you. You all have a nice Thanksgiving.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Bill had put on my desk, uh, no, it wasn't Bill. It was Carrie put it on my desk. I'm sorry, Carrie. A liquor license. I've been told the police have looked at it. This is a liquor license for East Restaurant at 283 Route 4 East in Rutland Town, the Chinese restaurant. And Chief Dumas or Ted, are you there?
He's there.
Is that Chief Dumas?
Yeah, and Ted too.
Okay. Are you guys satisfied with no violations, and you're satisfied with us approving this liquor license tonight, if we decide to?
Yes.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board, folks?
I'd move we approve. Oh, Joe, you were allowed this one, right?
I don't know. It doesn't matter. I'd move we approve it.
Second.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Mary to approve East, East Restaurant's liquor license. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. There is a red folder here, folks, that say originals on it. This will be here with the orders, with plenty of things that need your signatures when you come in later this week to sign the orders, okay? Thanks for getting that to us, Carrie. All right, Bill, what else we have?
I had sent everybody by email a letter from a town resident who was interested in filling the, the pending vacancy, and that was the only other, other thing that I had.
All right.
Yep. That's everything on my desk.
Okay. Would you bring me, after we're done with your segment, would you bring me the letter I gave you, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything for Bill, folks?
All good.
All right, Bill. Thank you for everything. We're going to go to Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Good evening. I, I really don't have anything to report out tonight. Just, I was listening to your discussion about asking Andrew about the capital improvements fund, and if the money should go into the general account. And it got me thinking about the last time we were talking about what happens with the transfer station money. I know Joey had asked that last time. And just as a follow-up, very quickly, the punch card money goes right into, back into the general account, and it's distributed as we needed to pay bills for the transfer station. So we can also follow up on Andrew about the money from, if we get anything from the container, and what to do with that.
Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
All right. Carrie, thanks for everything. Anything else?
I don't have anything tonight.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Barbara Pulling, are you on?
I am. Here I am.
Hey, Barb. How are you?
Good, good. Not too much tonight. At the last Planning Commission meeting last week, a subdivision was approved, the Benetatos one, that is going to be, probably going to be a one, that is going to be, probably going to be a three lot subdivision. And it may be two, depending on the sale of the home there that's now on the market. They might want a buffer lot. So that went through. And the other thing of note from our meeting last week was we had Scott Dillon from the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation in to talk about the, one of the Thomas parcels. This one off Route 7, Route 7 and Post Road, that most recently was the subject of perhaps a solar array there, the sale of 75 acres or so. But that fell through because of a, there's several Native American sites in there, and there's one that's very significant that's in the corner, the southwest corner, near Carrillo. And that one is significant because it could be between 6,500 years old and 8,000 years old. So that's pretty old. That's like pushing up against the glacier period. So there's that factor for upcoming development. So we asked, we asked him, and Dick Thomas was present, and a couple of Velco representatives were there too. We asked them what we could do. It's not a large area. It's about a quarter of an acre. But Scott Dillon from the state said he's very willing to work with developers. In fact, he even thought solar panels could be placed, you know, across this site, as long as they didn't go too far underground. So I guess the takeaway from our conversation with him is that he will work with us. He will work with developers. He will work with the town on future projects. And that he just needs to know. He needs to be notified, and he suggested that the town requests as much as it can to have discussions with developers in regards to this parcel. So that's the information we got. Dick Thomas seemed satisfied and may have learned some things as well from that discussion. I'm not quite sure what the Velco people came, went away with, but there is a very significant site that's up there close to Route 7, too.
All right. That's interesting. Anything for Barbara on that, folks?
Yeah, I have a question, Josh.
Go ahead.
Um, could we get a, you know, some kind of a site map so we could see where that is in regard to Route 7, Kerry's, and the whole Thomas parcel, and maybe have that designated area flagged out? I think she said it was like a quarter acre. Am I right there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He had a diagram schematic of it, not a real detailed map, but I'm sure he would share that with us. You know, there is some sensitivity here.
Well, one of my thoughts are is that if it's like in a corner and not in the middle of the parcel, would it be in the town's interest to maybe negotiate a deal with Thomas's and purchase that and get that be town-owned and get it out of their property? And maybe that would make everybody happy, and then they could do something with the rest of that, and that wouldn't keep coming up in their face.
Certainly sounds like it could be an option.
You know, that might be in everybody's best interest, but I'd like to know where it is. I mean, if it's, like I say, if it's in a corner, I think I know where it is. We used to rent that land from Thomas's for a while and did haying there, and there was a spot there where there was a lot of flags on wire posts that were left in the hay field, and we had to go pick them all out before we fed them to the cows. They don't do well with wire that goes through a field chopper. So I kind of know where it is, and it's kind of, maybe, you know, like I say, maybe that's just some, maybe that'd be a good option, and maybe Thomas's would be good with that, and maybe that would help them with their Act 250 stuff. I think it's something to pursue.
Yeah, Joe, you do have a good idea where it is. It is in that corner, and it's pretty, it's overgrown right now. And, yeah, and, right.
And because it's kind of like on the edge, like next to Route 7 and Kerry's, I mean, we might have to purchase a half acre to square it up and get it out of there, but I think that's something we ought to look at, and then, you know, we could even talk with the Act 250 people, and maybe that would help with their decisions down the road because once it becomes town-owned and we could do something with it. I don't know what we would do with it in the future, just preserve it, and it'd be part of the town's history, especially if it's as old as what they think.
Yeah, we've had two recent projects proposed there. The first one, about three or four years ago, was key collision. They pulled out, they didn't cite that that, you know, parcel was a factor. I think they were more generally concerned about Act 250. But most recently, the Pacific Northwest Solar Company did cite it, even though they didn't talk to this Scott Dillon or the state much about, you know, what were the options?
You know, because one of the things that has, you know, come to my mind a few times is that whether or not we would look at extending the water main from the Army Reserve Building out to Route 7 there, along the property line between Thomas's and Kerry's, and I think it's Max Steel, and maybe even tie that to the city's main where it comes down by Paul's Cleaners. That would have helped with key collision if they had had municipal water. They might have been able to make that building work.
Another thing that Scott Dillon from the state did bring up, there are some other potential sites. They're probably not quite as significant, and they haven't been looked at, examined as closely as this one in the corner. But there, within that 75 acres, there might be some other areas that pop up as challenges in the future. So you might want to consider that, if, you know, weigh that against, you know, maybe making the purchase that you were suggesting, Joe.
Yeah. Well, maybe, you know, we can get some kind of, something might work out there where if we preserve a pretty big chunk of it, and the lesser significant ones, you know, they do some research, and maybe they'll find that those aren't significant enough to prohibit development, and especially if we preserve this more significant one.
Yeah.
What do the other board members think about this sort of idea?
I would like to see, I would like to see the layout, and I think we need to know where the sites are and if they're registered sites. I know we have a, we have a site on our property that's registered, so... But I want to know how many sites there are there. I mean, if we buy up one and then we end up with eight more, it doesn't really seem... I think we should know what's going on there before we jump into anything.
Yeah, this is Mary. I agree with Sharon. We can signal our interest, but subject to getting quite a few more details.
Barbara, would the planning commission be able to get some maps and more specific details for the board?
Yeah, I think I can be in touch with Scott Dillon and have him send what he showed us, and maybe he has other materials. He can send those directly to Bill, Bill Sweet, if that works.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Is there anything further from the planning commission, Barb, for us?
Not from our end.
Anything for Barbara, folks? All right, Barb, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Okay, thank you. You too.
Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
All right. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Hopefully you stay safe, Mark. I only have one thing on the list, and that is our holiday, senior holiday meal, which is now drive-through at the fire department next Tuesday, and I believe we're starting at about 8:30. So my only question to you is, how many of you are planning on attending? So I can get a head count. I believe we are having turkey and prime rib is on the menu. So yes, Byron, you're happy now. So there's a bunch on there. My thought when I sent out the email was if some people would like to help serve, basically just drive it, walk it up to the car. And talking to Jim, there are about 28 people that have signed up to get meals, so I just need to know from our end how many for the caterer. So if you could let me know, that would be awesome, because I need to let him know tonight.
Mike, I think the date is Tuesday, the 8th, so it's not next week. It's the week after.
I apologize. You're right. Tuesday, the 8th. I apologize. Yes, you are correct. Tuesday, the 8th. But we won't have any meeting in between then. We'll have a meeting that night, I believe. It is our meeting, our next meeting. So if anybody knows that they're going to go, please let me know. I have a count.
So Mike, you're going to start passing out at 8:30 in the morning?
No.
Oh, good.
No. They're bringing out at 11:00. I think 11:15 is when they're starting to pass out.
Okay.
There's 28 people, so they're driving up or just walking, you know, obviously probably taking their order and then putting their meal in the container and then handing them their container, or going through the proper protocol for them to receive their container.
Um, I don't mind helping, Mike, but I have to check my schedule first.
Okay. Would you be eating as well? My main thing is eating, too.
Nah, I think not.
Okay.
But thank you. I mean, it sounds wonderful. I just don't know if...
I understand.
Yeah. Mike, sign me up, please, unless Jim has already got me, and, which I think he has.
Yep.
And I'll help distribute, and I told him that I would do that, too.
Thank you. I mean, we don't need a million people. It's not, you know, it's going to be quite different. I'm just really glad that we're able to pull it off and offer the seniors something during this time. And it is what it is at this point, and at least we can make them have a nice, hot, fresh meal with a couple of choices. So I thank you for that. So if anybody's going to go, like Kerry, if you guys are going to go, if you and Susan are going to swing over, Josh, JP, Joe, if you guys are going to do that, great. I just need to give a head count. So at some point, just let me know. So I can get the correct number in there.
All right, Mike.
And that's all I got.
Anything for the rec department from the select board? All right, Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Just that one topic I wanted to briefly get you up to speed on. It's been a topic of discussion at the tax committee level as well as amongst some of us towns, and that is how we're going to handle response this winter during storms should one or more highway crews have to, should they have to get quarantined. I've been approached by the town amendment to help them out. I said we could, just because of the number of trucks that we have available, we can, you know, shuffle things around should we have to. I know Town of Pittsburgh, John Haverstock, said he hadn't really put a lot of thought into it yet, but felt he really kind of needed to get up to speed on that. So I don't know if, yeah, town by town, everybody making their own arrangements, or if there is going to be something a little more regionally through the planning commission or not. But anyways, I'll keep you posted as more discussions take place. They, um... One of the important things that we got out of this was the fact that we need to have a good communications set up in our town to allow, to let residents know should something happen. You know, it's similar to having a truck break down, only in, you know, a little more serious in that, you know, you may have multiple trucks that aren't available or multiple drivers that aren't available. So we need to let people know that maybe their street's not going to get plowed maybe as quickly as they might see or want. Certainly, main roads are going to be priorities, and, you know, we'll trickle down from there. So I talked with Bill Sweet the other day. I'm not a Facebook person myself, but, you know, I said, I asked him, should I give him a call at 3:00 in the morning and say, "Okay, service is going to be down today. Don't expect your street, particularly if you're on a short street or a short, flat street. Don't expect service for quite a while." Maybe that would give people a heads up as to, you know, "Maybe I need to leave for work a little earlier today. You know, I'm going to have to travel slower." We certainly can use front porch forum. I don't know how quick that gets out there. Then the other thing would be to contact radio stations. So I don't know. Is there anything other, anything else that you would want to suggest in that regard?
So you lost me in that explanation. What are you saying? That we're not going to have enough drivers to plow the roads?
No, if... What if, what if half my crew, winter crew, suddenly was under a mandatory quarantine? Now you're down.
Well, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be their problem to get somebody to drive their truck? We already paid them a stipend to perform for the winter. How is that the town's problem?
Well, I hadn't looked at it that way, JP, but maybe that, if the other board members are in agreement, we should take that approach, and I need to get a letter out to my contractors to let them know that they need to have someone...
A backup plan.
Backup plan, yeah.
Backup plan in case of illness. I think, Byron, you know, we would be responsible for the three of you if any of you guys are down, and then if you needed some help there, we'd have to figure that out. But I think your subcontractors, to JP's point, this is their job, so they would need to have a backup plan in case the primary driver is ill and can't be out. It's, and I think some of them do. So I think that may already be in place, but maybe you just need to talk to them.
I've got a couple of guys in mind that may not have a backup plan, so I certainly will draft up a letter and get that out to them and make sure that they get back to me so that I know that they have a backup plan.
Yeah, that sounds like the best way to handle it right now.
Okay. And should, should the Town of Pittsburgh call and suddenly say, "Jesus, we're really short today. Could you do Cornhill Road and Stevens Road for us for a day or two?" What do I say?
Say, "You've got your own roads to do. Our taxpayers don't pay us to do Pittsburgh roads."
So this is Mary. I have a question. Didn't we do a mutual aid compact for, it might have been FEMA, but emergency services?
We have a mutual aid agreement in effect, yes.
Okay, so could we activate that?
Part of that mutual aid agreement is if you're requested from another community to respond, you're only obligated to respond if you are able to.
Okay.
It's left up to you to decide whether you can actually respond or not.
Right. Plus, a mutual aid intended to respond to event circumstances.
Yeah, well, this kind of is, but I take your point, yeah.
Byron, I just thought of another quick communications method that might work if something like this did arise, maybe contacting the... Uh, maybe contacting the school early in the morning. They have a mass email list that could be sent out to all. Uh, parents and guardians who are on the distribution list to notify them of this uh issue if it arose.
I can do that. That's a great idea. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah.
Okay, and then any other discussion in in that matter? I I guess I know where I'm headed with that. Um, the only other thing I had was to let you know that we are tightening up our uh COVID requirements at the highway garage. Um, going forward, uh, we will be uh um wearing masks in the garage, uh, even though we're maybe even distanced. Uh, we're also going to uh uh two days a week, uh, fire up the uh ventilation fan and open windows and exchange air in the building so that uh. Um, we can avoid a lot of dead air, particularly uh like my office and the break room. Uh, those are kind of dead air places. And I just think it's cool that we keep uh fresh air coming in there at least a couple of days a week. Um, other than that, we will wait and see how the numbers go and should by January, February, things look better. Um, maybe, you know, things can get loosened up a little, but uh not uh not until the numbers start looking a lot better in our state.
Sounds, sounds like a good uh plan of action, Byron. So thanks for that and. Anything for Byron from the from the uh crew here?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Byron. Chris Clark, town fire chief. Chris, you there?
I'm here.
How are you, Chris?
I'm good. Uh, only one thing to report. Um, the fire department's also taking extra precautions where uh we're only doing emergency calls for. For the time being, so no more meetings or work nights. Uh, we have a couple dedicated people to uh. Check the trucks and equipment like we usually do once a month. So uh, that'll still be done, but. So right now, there's nothing going on in the fire department except for calls.
Smart. What's the board have for uh Chief Clark? Anything further, Chief?
That's it.
All right, sir. Thank you. Ed Dumas, Temple's chief.
You did.
Good evening.
So calls and serves, we had thirty altogether. Uh, Deputy Chief Washburn handled twenty seven of those calls. Amber Wool had two. James Gable, six, maybe had three. Uh, there's not a whole lot going on. We're pretty much operating as as usual, just at this point in time with just the same safety precautions as before. And I do have a request of an executive meeting reference to a personnel issue at some point in time here.
Okay, so we have a personnel executive session with the PD. We also have the town's attorney, Kevin Brown, meeting us at some point in the near future here for. An executive session to talk about a pending litigation. What uh what does the board have for Chief Dumas tonight? Anything further, Chief or uh Deputy Chief?
No, we're both good.
All right, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John Paul, town health officer. Anything from the health department?
So we do have to kind of. Start thinking along the lines that Byron's thinking about. Um, I mean, I think the restrictions we have at town office are working. Uh, but maybe in the next week or two, I'll. Uh, see what other towns are doing. I don't, uh, Carrie, people that are needing to get in, they they're able to make appointments under our system now?
Absolutely. They're still able to make appointments. Um, obviously, I am open to having a discussion with you if you feel the need to um curb that for a while. Um, you have access to the reports and the numbers more than I do. So um, you just let me know if we need to have a a chat about how town hall looks for that.
So as long as we are maintaining the square footage, in other words. My sense of it is you really can't have more than two people in and around that vault at the same time because of the limited space. Are you allowing two people at a time or are you still restricting it to one person at a time?
There has been moments when there are two people um uh over time uh for appointments, and that happens. Um, rarely, but when it does, we often ask both parties how they feel about it. Um, obviously, no one's let in without masks. Um, usually, uh, everyone is okay with the fact that um. Someone may have to come in at the same time for like ten minutes um as another person. We've had only one case um in particular. Of someone having an issue with another person being in that um office at the same time, and that was recent. Um, and that's unusual, but it it did happen, so.
Right, well.
Most of the appointments are one person. Um, but certainly if if we need to make it um one person at all times, then. We can so do do that.
Well, I don't know that we have enough information to make that determination now, but I just want you to be aware that at any time that you want to revisit. The current mode of operation, I'm happy to do so. I think we can go along the way we're going along now and see how it goes, but. I mean, life teaches us that the last part of any effort is always the hardest part, and unfortunately, we're in for the hardest part of this. Uh, virus coming in the next several months. So I think we're really gonna have to just wait and take it two weeks at a time.
I agree with you. I think we do have to take it two weeks at a time, and I'll be happy to um.
Okay.
Keep updating you at any point.
So that's what I had, Josh, is just we gotta, unfortunately, we gotta start paying attention more to. Where we're at with the virus and and um what the percentage of infection in our population is.
Good uh points, John and Carrie. Thanks for that. And uh, yeah, absolutely. Everyone needs to be vigilant and, you know, uh, stay safe out there, so. I had a couple of little things here before we uh moved down the agenda. I I uh picked up a, coincidentally picked up a copy of the the quarterly Rutland magazine today. And uh, there was an outstanding uh feature of uh Byron and uh his crew, uh, which I was really impressed by. I mean, this. Was four or five pages and photos, and so pick up the Rutland magazine. You'll you'll learn all about our winter plowing uh and maintenance. I thought that was great and nice job, Byron. And then the uh, the Thomas Dairy, they had a featured article as well in it, which I thought was pretty neat and um. So Rutland Town was very well represented in uh this edition of the Rutland magazine, which is a pretty nice, pretty nice publication that comes out four times a year, so. Grab a copy of that. Um, we have, uh, is there any committee meeting updates that I didn't uh mention? Uh, okay, all right. And so under new business, we've handled A and B. Uh, letter C, board to discuss adding a budget line for the cemetery next to town hall. Bill, did we find out some information on this?
Uh, so we had discussed it during the budget meeting and and it was decided that we would table it till tonight. Um, so there doesn't, I don't think there needs to be much, but there there. I've 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 already talked to some people who are willing to volunteer some time, but there'll be some, just some supplies that we could use toward toward that. There will be a fence in the future, but that will be a one-time, a one-time thing. Um, but um, I mean, if if we do like even like five hundred dollars, then we can have some of the volunteer crews buy some things. Now Marty and his wife have already said they'd be willing to help with that. Um, but just so so we could work with some upkeep with um. Uh, keeping the stones clean and things like that. And I talked with Byron also, and and there's some things that he might be able to point me in the right direction of too, but. Um, just something to, if we want to discuss it, about about putting it in there to to help with that.
I think that we should look at maybe a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars for materials mostly. I mean, it it's nice if people want to donate their time. To uh help with stuff and make it look good, but I don't think anybody in town should really be spending money out of their pocket for materials, so. At this time, I think that would be an appropriate amount just because we don't know what we're going into. Also, that would cover, I know the lawn mowing comes out of the other budget. Uh, the maintenance at the building, but I think the lawn mowing for the cemetery should should have its own. Should come out of its own amount of money, and that that would make it much clearer as to where the funds are going.
Uh, you're you're right, Joe. The lawn mowing expense is rolled into the building maintenance expense because there was nowhere else for it to go at that point.
Right, and I think that if we put fifteen hundred dollars in our general budget for the Center Rutland Cemetery uh owned by the town, I think that that would be a good place to start and. We could, you know, like I say, nobody in town should have to purchase any materials for that project, and then. At some point, we'll need to get an estimate on a fence, then and see where that goes.
So am I hearing the suggestion that we add to the general budget a line for fifteen hundred dollars for cemetery, town hall cemetery maintenance?
Yes. I'd make that a motion.
Motion by, motion by Joe to um add a line to this uh new proposed budget of fifteen hundred dollars for town hall cemetery maintenance. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mary. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Uh, very good. We have the um, is Kevin on yet, Bill?
Yes.
Kevin, good evening. Give us another probably five, ten minutes, all right?
Um, sure, no problem.
All right, you have you have time?
Absolutely.
All right, my friend, thank you. Uh, and then we have um under old business, before I go to number three and four back in the pack, old business. Board to review the town uh delinquent tax collector um agreement that he submitted. We are, that is gonna be under discussion. Uh, one of the topics with the town's attorney, there there might be a question or two about that, so. No action to be taken right now in that gym if you're still on the line. Well, more information to come on that uh agreement, okay? Um, all right, so we have uh, we had three. Number three was the latest version of the town um, the latest version of the town proposed budget.
I'm sorry, Josh, to break in, but I didn't realize my mute was still on. This is Jim Schultz.
Go ahead.
Um, is that um? Is that tax sale review something you're gonna be talking with Kevin about tonight?
Uh, that's uh one of the items that's on the agenda for executive session with Kevin.
Okay, so would it be appropriate for me to be in the executive session initially and you folks discuss that? So if you have any questions?
I think the board has.
No, it would not be appropriate.
Okay. Just wanted to know. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, I was gonna, I was just gonna say that I think we have the information and uh we'll have the discussion. We'll let you know which direction we go with it. Um. The budget, um. Were there any, we had one request by Mary to uh have a personnel committee meeting, which did not happen yet. Uh, to discuss the salary of the town clerk and treasurer. Um, I did hear from a couple of board members uh in between our last meeting that. There is more comfort and and possibly support on the board for um maybe a a one-time um bonus or stipend for Carrie and Susan for. The extraordinary effort that they had to put in through the primary and then the election with the um with the uh mail-in ballots. Uh, and the uh, the amount of work that that uh piled onto their office. Um, and I do know that uh both of them have been, you know, working some Saturdays to try to catch up in the office and so on, and the the election certainly. It sounds like across the board, actually, uh, in the in the state, many town clerks and treasurers were, felt the pressure and and are certainly a little behind on some of their work, so. That was one idea that I heard from a couple of you that that was probably the more appropriate or reasonable thing at this time and a nice compromise maybe between what Mary suggested and what other board members felt comfortable with. So I'll leave it there. I'd love to hear discussion from my colleagues on how they'd like to proceed on this matter.
Uh, so this is Mary. I think the personnel committee should still meet on this because while we might have talked among ourselves. Um, I think it's important that we hear what Carrie has to say. We haven't really had that discussion with her, and I think the personnel committee should do that.
Certainly, certainly a great option still to send it to personnel. Was there any other discussion around this, or is that where the board would like us to continue to head?
I think that needs, I mean, that's kind of what we discussed. I think that needs to happen and just make sure everybody's on the same page and then and then just come back to the with us with a proposal. I I think we're in a good track, but.
Okay, so uh the uh, the board will schedule a personnel committee meeting uh at a later date to discuss that. Um, was there anything further in the uh proposed budgets that needed to be discussed tonight?
I think we took care of the cemetery stuff. I don't think we had any other questions, did we?
We just had that thing about the percent increase for the police budget.
Yeah.
Right.
And you'll get that ironed out, too.
Okay. Um. All right. So I had a couple of things if I could uh take just a couple of minutes. Um, today I submitted this letter to uh Bill and to Carrie as the Ministry of Assistant and Town Clerk. And uh, it reads, uh, to the Rutland Town Select Board, Town Clerk and Town Ministry of Assistant from Joshua C. Terranzini. It's short and sweet, uh, but it's a my official letter of resignation. It says, uh, serving on the Rutland Town Select Board has been a true honor. I have enjoyed every moment of working closely with all of you. There are truly world-class minds and leaders right here at the Rutland Town Hall. Due to my recent victory to the Rhode Island State Senate, I am resigning my position from the Rutland Town Select Board as of eleven fifty-nine on. Eleven fifty-nine PM on November twenty-fourth of twenty twenty. Please feel free to reach out in the future if I can be of any assistance to our special town. Thank you to all who serve and I've worked with. Sincerely, Joshua C. Terranzini, Rutland Town Select Board Chairman.
Well, we're gonna miss you, Josh.
Well, I appreciate you. I uh, I spent a couple of days here yesterday and today, for the most part, cleaning out and uh completing some of the last few things I had to do and. I um. You know, in my mind, had this big speech prepared. I wanted to send everyone off with and and uh there's so much I'd like to say, but I just can't. Um, but just know that uh it has been. Besides for my wife and kids, it has been my life's greatest honor to sit here and. Serve alongside of you, so I'll miss everyone. So that's it for me, and um. We have uh an executive session to go into, I believe, unless someone else wants to talk.
Can we ask for a recount of the ballots? Are you sure you're a senator?
I'm fairly, I'm fa- I'm fairly certain.
Well, I think I.
Panarchy.
I don't know, Josh, from irregularity. I I, my objection.
I feel fairly confident. I feel confident that Rutland County didn't see any of these so-called irregularities, so.
What were those bags you were hauling into the town office when your votes were being collected, Josh?
Well, yeah, one little bonfire out back that I saw you doing.
Yeah, you're, the, I think the Rutland Herald's still on. You weren't supposed to say that, John Paul.
Well, I'm not the only one that saw it, Josh. I mean, people are saying, you know, I mean, people are just saying, hey, Josh was hauling bags that looked like mailbags.
I think that's on Facebook, too.
Yeah, you guys are funny.
I heard it was bags of donuts that came in, and he was trying to get some s'mores cooked up for everybody.
Yeah.
Josh, I fired Sidney Powell, and you'll be hearing from her.
Oh, good, thanks, Kevin. That's good. Well, anyways, thanks for everything, everyone, and, um, and, uh, that's it, so I guess we would, go ahead.
Josh, I just have a, uh, I guess it's a housekeeping, um, thing. Can you kind of tell us, um, or how we go forward from here? How much time is left on your term?
So, um, fortunately, fortunately for the process, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, why, why don't we start by, um, replacing you while you're still here?
I think that's.
So, I'd nominate, I'd, I'd nominate Mary to be Chair.
Oh.
For the next meeting.
Are we gonna do one meeting at a time?
No, no, we only do that in Wisconsin.
One meeting at a time, see how you work out.
They only, they only do that in Wisconsin, Mary.
So, uh, I hear, there's a motion on the floor, uh, by John Paul to make, uh, Mary Ashcroft Chairman of the Select Board effective next meeting. Is there a second?
Yep.
Seconded by Sharon. For discussion? All those in favor of John Paul's motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Mary.
Congratulations. So, what, what we've done in the past, Mary, I don't know if we had a vacancy since you've been on, but we just put an announcement in the paper, and we asked people to submit letters of interest, say, within the next two weeks, so we can look at them at the next board meeting, and, uh, maybe even have some folks in to talk to them.
I see we have one.
Kevin had sent around the, um, um, his memo that he used when we had a vacancy last time, and I think the first thing we do is we need to put on our website and wherever else, maybe an ad in the paper. I, I think that's good. Um,
Sure.
that there is a vacancy beginning tomorrow at, what, one minute past midnight, and we invite people. Do you want to set a date by which they should submit a letter of interest?
Why don't we make it the Monday before our next meeting?
December seventh.
December seventh.
December seventh?
Yeah, that's the Monday before, yep.
Right.
Pearl Harbor Day.
Yeah, it is.
So, so the quick question, Josh, um, and I didn't get an answer, was how much time is left on your term?
Yeah, so, uh, I have, I was up in this, this coming March, March of twenty twenty-one was, uh, when my term ended, so I, uh, the person that you would appoint, uh, would, uh, from my understanding, would then, um, need to get on the ballot for March to, to run for, to fulfill the entire, or, uh, the next term, whoever that may be.
Right. So, so basically, there's four-plus months left on your term.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, there's four months or so, and it's a nice opportunity for whoever, whoever you appoint to get their feet wet and decide if it's something they want to do long-term, or maybe it's not for them.
Okay, perfect. That's what, that, that needs to be part of what we're, uh, put out there to the public, that this is an interim position until the election in March, and if the appointed person wants to continue, they're gonna, you know, they'll need to know that they have to run again. Perfect.
Anything further to discuss on this, uh, subject? Okay, a motion to go into executive session would be, um, we'll do Kevin Brown first, and then, uh, we'll, and, uh, after Kevin's concluded, we'll, uh, ask the, the PD to join us.
Um, yeah, so, Josh, this is Kevin. I, I think the motion should include both, both matters because the, uh, the, uh, discussion with the police chief would involve personnel matters that are subject to privacy concern.
Did you cut out, Kevin, or did you, was that a, was that a complete sentence?
No, I, I, I said the exec, I think the executive session should include, one, the tax sale, and, two, the discussion with the police chief, uh, regarding personnel, because the personnel matter involves, uh, matters of protected by HIPAA and privacy concern.
Understood. Does someone want to make that a motion?
They'll move.
Motion by, motion by Sharon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. All those in favor to go into executive session, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good night, everyone. Well, sweetie, you there?
I am, and you are back recording.
All right, so we're out of executive session at eight fifteen. Is there any action to be taken from our discussions in executive session?
So, I would make the motion that the town extend the Family Medical Leave Act benefits to its employees.
Motion by John, seconded by Joe DiNardo. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is there any further business to come before the Select Board tonight?
Um, I would like to move that we do not execute the, uh, contract that was presented to us by the tax collector.
Motion by Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by John Paul. For discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there any further discussion or any further business coming for the Select Board tonight, folks?
Other than wishing you all the best, Josh, and thanks for being our Chair.
Well, thanks.
Parting is such sweet sorrow.
Thank you for this opportunity the last five years, you folks. I've enjoyed it very much, and I'll miss you.
Yeah, I hope you, I hope you can do as much up there as you did for us.
Yeah.
We'll see. Thank you, everyone. There's, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
They'll move.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Joe DiNardo. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, happy Thanksgiving.